I call the board, we are at the city council meeting on May 4th, 2021. All eyes on the nation of this place.
I literally just stood in the fight of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Please silence itself first. All right, this meeting details have been placed coming.
Sharon Barney.
Join the meeting.
And being via teleconference to the governor's order, Detective Order N. National 29th, that's twenty. There will be limited access to council chambers. This mask and physical distancing will be required. Members of the public may also notice and participate in the meeting via teleconference. You wish to listen or participate in this meeting through teleconference, simply dial into the conference number below and then dial. During this call, you may press star nine to raise your hand to ask the speaker in the meeting. Speakers will be asked to identify themselves. This is the time for public comments. Council may ask questions, but may take questions within the public comment section of this meeting. Except to direct staff to prepare a report or place it on the future agenda. If you're here to make a comment on a specific item, you may speak at that time. If not, this is a time, please look at your remarks of five minutes. All right, is there anybody from the audience wants to make some comments?
For Emperor Love, for streaming. The crime situation in Wairiki does not go away. And the need for the city council to address this problem does not go away. Again, on that, it's been four days without town hall meetings. Where you get all the input on that.
Thank you on that, Renzo. Actually, we are, um, there's some stuff that we are addressing as immediately, you will see. There's some stuff, oh, come on, Phil, thank you. I know it's not, I know it's not soon, I know it's not soon, but I know this, I realize that, Renzo. Unfortunately, there's only so much we can do. Thank you, though. All right, is there anybody else that has public comments?
Seeing no public comment at this time.
All right, we move on to number one, SISCU Media Council. Presentation, thank you.
I'm just gonna file your presentation. Hi, everybody.
Hi.
Um, thank you so much for allowing us to, I'm gonna make a presentation. I, I put together a little video presentation because I get really nervous. I was like, I got called to school. Um, so if you don't mind, or can we run that first?
Hello, I'm Sheriff Jeremiah O'Rourke. SISCU Media Council has a rich history in serving the community of Siskiyou County. In nineteen seventy-eight, the Wairiki City Council founded YCTV Channel Four as an all-volunteer public access station. In nineteen ninety-eight, MCTV Channel Fifteen was founded. In two thousand and six, YCTV Four merged with MCTV Fifteen. And in two thousand and seven, the organization was restructured and renamed SISCU Media Council. Public access television channels, MCTV Fifteen and YCTV Four, are free from corporate influence with content made by the people and for the people of Siskiyou County. Content like Inside Siskiyou, the only televised news show in Siskiyou County, featuring two anchors.
Hello, Siskiyou County. I am Shune Stross.
Hi, guys, I'm Dr. Ralph from Siskiyou Reviews.
And myself, I'm Sheriff Jeremiah O'Rourke, and this is the weekly sheriff's report. Now with the new weekly format, together each Friday, we bring you an overview of what is happening throughout Siskiyou County. News where you live. Of course, you can watch MCTV Fifteen and YCTV Four on your local cable television provider. But didn't you know that you can also watch the live simulcast on the web for free? As well as video on demand? You can find both options on the front page of the SMC website, siscuemediacouncil.org. Yes, you can watch your local movies, COS home football games.
Anderson Russell, you know him? Alright, okay.
City council meetings. As well as newly created Siskiyou County public content on your smartphone, computer, and coming soon, Roku. As a nonprofit 501(c)(3), Siskiyou Media Council relies heavily on tax-deductible memberships, donations, and partnerships. Together, we can continue to give you a voice, a platform, and the information and support our community needs.
One of the values that we came up with, that's one of our guiding values, evolution. Because we constantly want to be a wall to meet the needs of our.
Today, over two thousand children throughout Siskiyou County will read the same book to promote the importance of daily reading, talking, and singing.
The Majorate Hospital's Board of Directors, our staff, volunteers, and I welcome you to our virtual Light of a Life ceremony, the ceremony celebrating life, love, and light. I am very grateful to the Siskiyou Media Council for their expertise and guidance during the process of producing this virtual ceremony.
Siskiyou County's only television stations. Siskiyou Media Council truly appreciates your support. Thank you.
Uh, yeah, it's, uh, so I did, um, give author the stand-up for you. And it is, let me actually ask you my story. Um, which I would tell you, why, why don't you, if you don't mind, um, just for a couple of minutes, I'd like to read a little bit for you. Um, so as one of the oldest public access television stations in the country, YCTV Four was originally established during the mid nineteen seventies by a community of hardworking individuals through an agreement between the city of Wairiki and the local provider. But in my franchise fees, the original station began with a small room in the back of the people company store. Then later it moved to the Techie Building, which is larger but had several problems. After that, the city where they have helped set up YCTV Four at another location adjacent to the city of Pittsburgh. In two thousand and seven, when Siskiyou Media Council was founded and began hosting the two public access television stations, Wairiki's YCTV Four and Mead's MCTV Fifteen, the studio moved onto the campus college of Siskiyou, where it grew out. Um, because as you know, they had an entire program around media. Now, this is for our company to say this, so, uh, seven years later, however, the SMC fell under its stated direction to move its studio off campus to a private location in Mount Shasta. Recognizing the error, the board terminated the director, then found a homeless, without equipment, without memberships, and with a no selling reputation because of the minimum rent charges. Okay, so that's when I stepped on work, that was about two and a half years ago. Um, we were meeting, just little places where we get invited to meet. And then we ended up renting the building next to blocks from the campus of Mead and the Alora Home. Um, and we have, in two and a half years, developed, um, an entire film, film studio, totally equipped. We have an office, we have interns, we work directly with Siskiyou Works, um, before that. And we have, um, collaborative partners with not only colleges of the Siskis, which helps us, we are a part of it, right? Um, but also with now First Try Siskiyou, all of the work that you saw in that video. To us, you know, being a public access station means serving our public. And those entities serve our public, so it makes sense for us to serve that. So the other part of this I'd like you to know is that during COVID, you know, when all the memberships stopped coming in and people stopped producing, and our, our film studio had closed, um, we were doing things like virtual, like for a minute or, right? But we didn't have, we don't have the the way to, um, be funded through those people who owns. We are not directly serving the public, therefore we didn't qualify for minimums that everything else did. So we've kind of been a rock, our place. And so, um, that is why I come to you, letting out of your back. Um, and that's the end of my thing here. So as you can see plainly, many things have changed since two thousand and twelve. Our contractual agreement became Wairiki City Council. This is the first letter. However, we're in a dedication to all the public access pioneers who have spent countless hours bending the way for people to have freedom of speech on a corporate-free platform all their own. We ask for continued support from the very entity that created the rights and TV for in the first place. Together, we can continue to unite Siskiyou County while providing valuable information to the people of Wairiki and Yon. And we're looking forward to celebrating YCTV's fifteenth year of broadcasting together. Thank you. If you have any question, why don't you actually answer them after five more? Well, and I, and I put on the back for that, the insurance application that you had asked for. And then, and then the contract is, I suppose it might be another week, I suppose we have a, it's, it's gotta be longer. So, if there are any questions.
On your reflection.
Yeah.
Uh, it says the plan for twenty-three thousand of all grants, did you get that, Renzo?
Yeah, we're waiting. Um, so I, we applied last year for, for the news, we did not get that. But this is actually for a quick grant for brand new servers. Okay, and just so you know, if we get them, that was one of the most wonderful things. We will be able to live soon and interrupt the channels from everywhere, anywhere. So including your children, so we're very hopeful for that.
How many board members do you have? Who are they and where are they? What part?
Oh, I'm sure everybody's.
Where are they from?
Um, Jeremiah O'Rourke is our hard president, and he is from Denver. Um, and we have Kylie Quist, who is officer of Mount Shasta. Um, he is in Mount Shasta. Um, we have Ray Cleveland, who is in Doris. And we have Richard Ninjas, who is in Shasta. He is the, um, executive director of the Chamber of Commerce there. And Anna Housman, who is our treasurer from Shasta, who made that statement, which are, she was close. So, I wonder. Right, yeah.
Thank you very much. Very helpful.
Oh, yes, I'm a little scared of those things. Technically, those things were a little, you know, toxic. I'm writing on this, I'm very toxic, and hopefully that will be a new media, um, program. Thanks so much.
That'll do it.
That was the biggest, so one of our, uh, team, they were, uh, they were after that.
Right on.
Yeah.
Well, cool, thank you so much. Any other specific questions? All right.
Uh, there is one public comment.
Uh, I got a question, are you gonna restart doing, uh, city council meetings up on YouTube?
Yeah, yeah, and you do, that is a very good question. Elijah, I didn't get that. Um, yes, absolutely, well, there was a lack of communication.
Been over a year.
Yeah, there was, so just so you know, there was a lack of communication between us. And, um, and during COVID, it was really hard, we weren't able to get into this video. But now it is coming back, so absolutely, we totally wanna have it go on YouTube. But you can also get it on just our website. So even if you don't go onto YouTube, you can get it on, if you want, it's pretty easy to get. Thank you very much.
Good question, thank you. You have a question?
Uh, caller number eight, four, two, nine, one, one, three?
Yes, this is Sharon Barney. My concerns are the homeless in our city. I drive by, uh, behavioral health, and I see all these tents. I see strange people walking in my neighborhood, peering around people's backyards. Uh, I am a senior, and this very much concerns me. I know our police department's hands are tied, and I'm aware of the Boise law that allows homeless in our town. But I do think our city council can do something about it.
Um, thank you, um, who has been a part of the section, but thank you for that comment. Um, and if you want, um, I would love to address that question definitely for you. Um, please give, send me an email, and I'll get you my cell phone, and we can discuss that, thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much. If you have anything at all, any questions, any content that you want us to cut out, please, please just let me know. We're here for you. And in the court, you know that you will have work too available, so, oh, we'll ask for that. Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you, great, great presentation.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'm gonna split, that's okay.
Yeah. Well, yeah. Can I answer the whole question?
No.
Yes, the backlog of, uh, of tapes that I've already, you, this, you still have them?
We, oh, I have so much to tell you. But yes and no, we have the archives, or Elijah, who is right there. He is, uh, our program director, and he's so into archives, so he has actually taken, we've gone through them and put them in digital. But we got hit, we ran somewhere, right when it came on. And so the FBI has our hard drive and, oh, it's awful. So it's like something like three hundred shows. And so it's valued at something like ninety thousand dollars, so, you know, we put in a request, hopefully they will be able to get the fix, and, you know. And yeah, then we do have, no, thank you. Thank you.
I would enjoy that, I'll jump for it.
Me too.
Thank you so much. All right, we have another two. Special postal action, taking order of all matters, listed under the taking order of consideration. As the deputy, I'm a member of the council, wishes to move an item from special or a member of the audience, which is common by the item. Sitting under, determines approval of all in set, calendar items. A, approval of application of payments issued from April twelfth, twenty twenty-one through April twenty-fifth, twenty-one. B, approval of minutes of reading held from April twentieth, twenty twenty-one. C, wave all, or make full text reading on all orders on digital, and orders shall be introduced and adopted by title only. D, adopt resolution extending suspension of section thirteen point seven six point zero one zero. And this code allowing installation of banners on the road. E, continue, uh, privacy ordinance number eight fifty-five. That is a tricky, unusual way to put that one, Steve. Oh, yeah. Okay, what is the wishes of the council? Are there any questions from anybody or audience? Or, or taking questions, if there's anyone in the audience having questions? Not, and all, it's the, uh, the council.
Debbie here. I would like to move that we accept item number two in its entirety and present it.
So we have a motion, I'm Debbie here, I'm gonna go on a second. Yes, we're still doing our call, and we have everyone's on council present right now.
I could do that, we would probably have that, but.
Just to know that, uh, that John is absent, uh, just so we know it's announced, so she's absent on the scene.
Sure. Uh, Mayor, Brittany, and Derrick.
Hi.
Raymond, and that, uh, the gentleman, Paul Gordon.
Hi.
The gentleman, David.
Hi.
Hi. Wow, mighty, Perry. Two hundred and three, special postal action, adopt resolution, amendment resolution number one hundred and seventy-five. Especially parcel numbers, newer with three gaps, closer to three gaps, zero, that's one fifty and two ten, and one three one fifteen signage area. And by means this resolution is exempt from CECL.
You sure, uh, have, we now.
Mayor Keg and members of the council, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, um, back in nineteen ninety-six, the wisdom of the city council at the time, they created what's called a freeway interchange zone, wherein the planning commission could make exemptions to the height and size limitations of signs. For some reason, they left out of two particular lots on the north end of town. The developer of the property, um, has requested to get an exemption. And the only way to do that is to have the council amend the original resolution, which would grant the planning commission the authority to give an exception to the sign height. This was taken to the planning commission, and they unanimously decided that was a good idea and recommended that the city council adopt the resolution. Do you have any questions?
Liz, this is Paul Gordon.
Hi, Paul.
Can you hear me?
I can.
Exhibit A. Uh, item one, north interchange.
Yes.
It appears that the two lots that are highlighted are on either side of the road, is that correct?
That's correct. And, you know, I was here in ninety-six, and I don't remember why these were excluded, nor did Pam Hayden. For some reason, they cut it off, they didn't go all the way to the intersection, which is odd. They purposely left off these two lots. But now Manny has a development project he would like to put in, and one of the requirements it, for the gas station that would like to go there, is a particular sign height, which we allow in all the intersections.
Uh, and Liz, if we're, if we're looking at, the development that we're possibly looking at is on the parcel that is on the south side, so?
No, the north side.
North side.
It's Manny's, where the liquor, where the liquor store is now.
Yeah.
So that, that's Manny, he wants to, he's, he's working on a very large development. I think I've talked to a couple of you guys, i- it's been in the works for a couple of years.
Oh, Manny, okay. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
I, yes, thank you very much.
Questions?
This, this is council member.
Number, is there, is there, is there, is there a, a, a question?
This is councilman McCoy, that I will make a motion, uh, that we adopt resolution, a resolution, amending resolution number two one seven five to include the special parcel numbers zero five three, uh, dash four seven three dash one five zero. And I guess zero five three four seven three dash two ten in the north freeway interchange signage area. And finding this resolution is exempt from California, Maryland, California, CECL.
Where's our mayor?
Hi.
The gentleman, the gentleman Gordon.
Hi.
The gentleman, David.
Hi.
Eric, thank you, Liz.
Thank you, city council, I'll let Manny know, he'll be very excited.
All right. Number four, special postal action, approve the amended transportation claim for FY twenty twenty, twenty-one, local transportation. Club and off lines, very fun, playing on behalf of the city. Cindy.
Hello.
Hello.
Can we try this again?
Yeah, there you go.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Right. Mr. Mayor and the council, this item might look somewhat familiar. Last meeting, we already approved the transportation claim for this district area. However, local transportation commission made a commitment to it and doesn't to approve this matter, most of the others. The new signature on the new letter.
Questions?
Who's the way you're in it with the perfect?
The kind of thing. No, this is councilman, I would like to, uh, recommend that council approve the attached transportation claim for the twenty, twenty-one, all of the transportation plans. All right, mayor, the sign of claim on behalf of the city.
It's coming about. A second. Mr. Mayor. Reverend Derrick.
Hi.
Governor, uh, friend, uh, the gentleman Gordon.
Hi.
The gentleman, David.
Hi.
All right, well, great, thank you, Cindy. Number five, special postal action, this makes specific gate blocking times for upward and downward changes. It's the interment. That. I got it.
So I came up with, uh, speaking with, I came up with the idea, discussing with my crew, as long as, as well as, uh, some other people that, that I know are experienced with the time limit to get your law. And tried to come up with, uh, um, seven hours to base since, beyond, that's your dog. And all this to be upfront, so you, my goal with this is to eventually be able to budget and gauge that automatic lock at that time. That's my end goal with this, but, uh, so I came up with, for two sets of hours, I multiplied it, doing it for season. Different, different options, so, uh, I really wanted to get, to just have me two sets of rotating hours. And I decided the best option was to rotate those hours around daylight, day and night. Which leaves for one season, it's four months long, one season, eight months long. And the best hours that I come up with were from seven AM to nine PM from March through October, and then from seven AM, excuse me, seven, I said it right, seven AM to nine AM, March through October. And then the winter hours would be seven AM to seven PM on November, December.
Well, I got a question for you.
Yeah.
Um, I know, cause I've seen it today, you know, usually the city crew doesn't make it up there to seven thirty, anyways. This could be an issue, um, when we make this change?
You're correct, I think we could change to seven thirty, because we do, we, we send the, out the, the person who we have dedicated these restrooms up, and they leave our break room at seven AM. So it's probably closer to seven thirty, by the time they start, maybe there's.
Yeah, I think if you do, our hours at seven, then you'd have to have a crew there who'll urge your city yard in order to be able to perform that seven block duty at the park.
Yeah, you make a great point, because that is our hours are set now, that would require overtime to do that.
Yeah.
But seven thirty, that, that's a good point.
Um, so. The park does, they do not, they don't come to you?
They do, five days a week.
Oh, they do, okay.
Yeah, so then they have. Uh, that's around now, like, how we're trying to keep it up for, it's on Thursday, Fridays. We have a rather party perfection, I don't know if it's time.
Two, okay. Okay. It's, yeah, I love it.
But it's just been, um, difficult with dawn, big dust, dawn to dark. Um, uh, there's interpretation of all of those. So much so that today I research the difference between, um, astrological, what's another one, symbols the most light, and then there's notable, we have the logical, but symbols, I think, where there are people that have. what's another one, civil's the most light and then there's nautical, we have the logical, but civil's what I think, where there are people that have discrepancies on, on what's what. First of this time. And my goal is to have set hours, like I said before, I would really like it some with that, the budget or gates that lock at a set time.
So we just had a discussion, they have a fact, on the automatic gates.
Yeah.
The, the way down, Paul, you can see on, on a lot of gates, would be with uh being able to drive in there, tool, make sure everybody is when someone's locking the gate, that was going, going down, what we see on that side, I agree on a lot of gates, so I.
What do you do? I, I have quotes, they're slightly outdated, they're from twenty nineteen. Um, and the, the quotes aren't to the fullest extent because they're easy powers and stuff, but we still have the most likely underground power that have some sort of charter to their gates, um so there'd be additional work. And so that's a question that is, there'd be a little bit additional cost, but they weren't crazy, it was um five thousand and change for upper, if I remember correctly, seven thousand dollars for lower, and then plus the additional cost of city, the underground power. And then there's, there's another question on how to take care of it, I don't have an exact answer to whether we have, how they work at the city yard. Where there's an auto unlock function if people drive up to it, but here the people would learn the system, and people wanted to stay later, it's like, oh, I know the gates are open up automatically if I drive back to it. But we have that problem now where people get locked in and white Ds called and they unlock, so it's I really do think the auto gates are the best long-term solution for this, in order to accomplish that, we'd have to have set hours.
Right, and that's getting locked in, even with the, current park codes that are there go through at whatever time they deem to be dusted, and I'm glad you brought up something because, you know, it's a change that's throughout here, where they go through with the bullhorn and then the sirens, and then they go over closing in ten minutes, and then they go back and they step, set up their clothes. Now, I, 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 I did have set hours for the gates.
And so I, I, I did a breakdown of hours of, at some times during I actually wasn't, I, I tried to do my best to put some thought to this, onto the hours that were set. And there's at times that um seven PM in the winter hours is much later than it's, it's any form of summer.
Yeah.
But I don't think seven PM's a, a real, a really big deal, like, it's seven PM's not that late, I think if people get so annoyed apart at seven PM in the winter time, it washes the stars over the lake. Given the opportunity to have fun.
It's a lot of people. This can't be done anymore.
I have to be, sir. Um, I actually have to admit, when I saw March um first there, till nine o'clock at night, that's pretty late.
Yeah.
I didn't push it to April first, I wouldn't.
And the reason I did that, just to show my logic behind, and not to say that I'm, I'm correct, this was me discussing with my crew, coming up with the best option that I could think of. But I did March because daylight savings, or within the first two weeks of March, where you jump an hour ahead at a time. So I didn't want to say daylight savings where we have to have a set date, so my reasoning for March first was knowing that daylight savings would come very shortly after that, where it's gonna put everything in our head, and on daylight savings, um I went with nautical twilight, which is the twilight that's in the middle, it seems like civil twilight is actually the twilight that most people use. When I went through uh the definition of daylight they, they seem to exclusively use um civil twilight for the definition, the end of civil twilight, their definition of the end of daylight. But um nautical twilight, which is in the middle of astrological and, and uh, and civil, um on March fourteenth, which daylight savings will be this, this year is eight sixteen PM.
Okay.
So it was, it was about, it's, it's super complicated trying to think of a system that works every day, but I probably see why I thought about it, right?
Well, yeah. Well, I think officially by the eyes of March, I can say by the eyes of March, you have, you have daylight savings, just before it's happened.
So I really did try, they come up with something that makes sense, and six months interval didn't work at all. And then having four separate times, or they go three months at a time, didn't make sense, so my, my schedule around daylight saving with my brain damage is the best.
Yes, your mayor.
You did an excellent job.
Yes, sir.
I have one point of clarification, Mr. Mayor, and the council, I have a very, very important question. The discussion this evening at hand is locking of its time. The parks' hours are separate from this conversation, and I just want to clarify that. Out there is the, it's set by resolution on, I'll be on bed, I'm going to say the parks opened by, by resolution from I think, I don't know, I think eleven, they have to object that, but it's a less, that you give for sure. Eleven AM, this is gate locking, if not, then everybody out in the park, it's everybody with a car.
Yeah. Thank you, I have a case to make. Yes. Um, I appreciate what Van has done, I initially was not comfortable with this, I wasn't real, I wasn't probably supportive of it. Uh, after listening to our comments and hearing what he's had to say, and also knowing that this is part of a long-term plan to move forward with a, with a self-locking gate system on both parks. And thinking about my time out in the park, and when I'm there at like, anywhere type of time of clock, the bullhorn comes out, and it's like, you're done, out of here, and then they lock the gates, and then if you're locked in, you still walk around, you're locked in, you're locked in. Um, I actually really like this now, so that, since Van has taken the time to explain it, and I would like to make a motion to approve. Is that, oh, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry. No, but we're gonna ask it. I still, I wanted, and you might be saying this, the seven thirty versus the seven o'clock, because, because we don't get the, we don't have the overtime on that. Okay, so let me, let me, I would like to make a motion, councilman McCoy. To designate specific gate locking times for upper, lower green horn. Uh, s- summer hour between seven thirty and nine PM, winter hour between seven thirty and seven PM. Okay, so that's no need to change.
Correct.
I would also like to note in, in making a motion that um I would also like, as a councilman, to encourage public works, Van and Matt, to go ahead and pursue uh long-term plans of putting in new gates that would, would function independent. Understand that there's a cost to that, there's a cost of heat, there's a cost of maintenance, which are, which would be different on heat maintenance. A cost of putting out, drifting in, under that, and that's gonna cost some money, but you know, over thirty, twenty, thirty years. And it's gonna be better for the, for the community. So that, that's my motion. Okay. We have a little second, I'll second. Alright. And then motion, Paul Boy, with the, the, uh, seven thirty to nine, and seven thirty to seven, and the winner, uh, second, my little dear. Mr. Mayor, please. Senator, Mayor.
Oh.
Do you have more than one?
Hi.
Do you have more than one?
Hi.
There, there.
Hi.
And you show, very good. Thank you. Thank you, Frank, I appreciate it, and you answer all that work. I'm on to number six, special special parcel action, letter of opposition to SB two ten. Um, the license plate recognition data extension.
There, there's a couple, this is um, anyway. These are legislation that I can work some federal companies on. And what this, these are legislation to do is require, I don't know, should we get there? It requires that all data that is joined into the automated license plate uh reader, that doesn't match any of the hot lists, you just read it in twenty-four hour. And what that does, it doesn't take into account processing that fact, randomly going through, checking if that auto is, and also uh sometimes there are crimes that happen, leaving after this, uh maybe longer from the border. We do not currently, you know, the city, or the council, use the automated license plate readers, but there is a possibility that uh we could use this all, um here, uh, you know, by other, other readers, but all crimes across the state. So this is something that we, California cities, or California cities, we're gonna help, so, he's recommending uh opposition, yeah. We sadly recommend that uh authorization for whatever you uh sign with.
Sir, say, questions? No questions, definitely a flawed bill. Yeah. It is, it's, it's not a random law enforcement, it's not even for, for kids that are, that are stolen, it's not a kind of, those kind of kids are running away for things, so I'm gonna make the motion uh to uh, uh, for a law of opposition for SB two ten introduced by uh Congressman Weiner at the state level, for license plate recognition, never intention be drafted and then be signed by the mayor um with the uh, with uh, city council. Second. Mr. Mayor, please. Senator, President, Mayor.
Hi.
Do you have more than one?
Hi.
Do you have more than one?
Hi.
There, there.
Hi.
And you show, very good. Thank you. Number seven, special parcel action, who made three hundred thousand dollars of the mall appropriation of two streets, budget for chip seal work. So Cindy.
Ladies and gentlemen, Mayor, I was a sample. Can you all hear me?
Hmm.
Um, the forty third, the question for supplemental appropriation, as you know, normal vision will probably come high every year. And this year, comments may be yet, that you can add a couple parking lots in the mix. And you also like to add some of the area around those corner treatment plant. And the dollar now, so we will carry, we have the lottery, six thousand dollars for in city streets, in that riding, the Sharks Road, uh green one parking, parking lots. Between Ben and I, we designated that one, possible, and remainder was an estimate of the waste water treatment plant direct, the chip ceiling, it's a whole irregular, we hardly get an exact square footage, but we will let that sixty thousand each cover, but for three hundred thousand dollars for supplemental appropriation. Yes. So on the Sharks Road, well, that included the strike. And all these, like, it's just.
You're correct, Cindy, the, the square footage, but uh
I have received the request from the other park there, for the Shark works, we, we, we know for safety reasons, people pass each other when um there are weak guests, slow to turn in, the oncoming or leaving traffic is passed on the road, certainly the safety of the issue.
Oh. Yes, so the, the dollar, the square footage to the actual streets and parts, it did not include the, sorry, I think that was on the square footage of the project, um but I believe that the, the amount on the coast of the wastewater treatment plant is gonna be much higher than the actual dollar amount. Uh, I know that uh, didn't count that uh five sixty of the lot, you're out of three tenor streets, but um so we, we can discuss that, our plan was to do some of the striking in houses, and then hire another small amount, so we'd be glad to listen to the last paper, the part I think.
I can make the.
Great line.
Hey, I'm.
So that's the questions? Yeah, I've got a call question, so the three hundred thousand dollars that we're, that we're looking at tonight is in addition to what we're already gonna be using for chip ceiling this summer.
The machine money, although uh so the county will not, uh, the county is unable to work with us this year, excuse so we were unable to work with this county, I reached out to them, they're just not in position with into our general project. So I was with Cindy, that just gets something going, and uh, upper and lower green more parks really need, their parking lots are in desperate need, um of, of work, there's a maintenance, and then so the three hundred thousand dollar number um, I believe how you see in front of you, that's from streets. About sixty thousand of that's for wastewater, so that number should really be two thousand, uh, two hundred forty thousand from streets, if I remember that, ninety thousand of that parking lots. And the remainder streets, so uh parking lots, trees are actually the same bunch.
So it's, it's machine money.
Absolutely, actually, we cannot work with the county, they're not, the county just cannot help us out this year, or they can't work with us this year. So Cindy would really help me out, really, somebody now with their project going.
Yeah, green one is definitely need it, for sure.
And you forget how big those things are, and everything that is actually for a double chip, so it's a, it's a it's four one thousandths of, of Oliver induced uh CRS, E M C R S oil, or those two are total oil, then they're gonna do three eighth chip, then they're gonna clean that, and then they're gonna do another coat of E M C R S oil, another coat of three eighth chip, and then fogs the wall, so this year we just had to do everything in a double chip. Which is part of the reason why the square footage probably doesn't look quite as big. But everything that we did this year really did the double chip, except for single chip, so it's it's a little bit less than uh twice the cost for square footage, but it, but you get twice, twice the material for square footage.
And Cindy, Cindy, what does uh LSR stand for, Centennial One LSR Fund?
Uh, National Local Street and Road Funding that we get every year from Centennial One, normally every year. Your M R A, Road Maintenance Repair Act gives us some funds, it's allocated strictly to our city caddies, and we do a resolution every year to get that money, we give to all these streets that are going here. And our standing project has been the chip seal project from the city.
Do we know what our anticipated income is on SB one?
It's about a hundred fifty one thousand dollars at the end of January, but then we've been at the end of May.
Okay. Thank you very much. See that they're working hard at, at the green one today, so. Now, natural, those guys?
Yes, so uh, we will be working at, it's actually lower green board, um, again tomorrow. We put out signage for Monday through Wednesday, which is tomorrow, so we're anticipating to close up, but this phase of the project tomorrow.
Oh, good.
And last second, we're on schedule. So then uh, we're, we're actively working at the wastewater treatment plant as well uh today. Because regardless if, if we get this, this approved by the council, uh, these areas need, they, they need help to get this. So if we get the, the base work done, and the, the cracks over, that uh we'll be, we'll be closer to ready for when it is approved, the council today.
Before we finish, I want to, I want to let, I want to let, and I want to, uh, go over, talking about the fence of the street.
The park, and I don't know if you know the physics, but we've been uh helping out with the picnic table, and the whole park is looking really, really good, if we do get some some uh double chip seal and a fresh fog seal and a fresh spray, you know, there's that, that parcel is really, really nice.
Yes. Thank you.
Well, thank you, your hard work. Or any other questions? Peter, yes, sir. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve three hundred thousand dollars supplemental appropriation to the street budget for chip seal work. Councilman on the floor. Motion, Paul. I'm gonna wait, I'll say it. Senator, Mayor.
Hi.
Do you have more than one?
Hi.
Do you have more than one?
Hi.
There, there.
Hi.
That's very good. Thank you, Cindy. Thank you, guys. Thank you. Great. Special parcel action, adopted resolution, approving the consult agreement with Vice Law for, for our council services for the Main Street Stewart, the Decepter Improvement Project, USDA, no, I guess we'll do that.
I'm just gonna add a little trigger, a lot of trigger right now. Um, so the, um, our M R A money, you know, is tied to the surface, so that can do, um, streets. The parking lots, which is on the Metro C, and I, is spread from there, so, or, or, and I can park lots where, where the money can't, um so that's kind of, I just want to clarify that.
So they're coming out of separate pots, right?
Yes, they aren't quite the same pot, um, on that, so they're, um, clarified out. Um, and then of course, the waste water is not final. Um and then of course wastewater is not final. Um on that, but great projects, great that they get started, um and get that going, but it is options a little bit bigger, but. Um so on to the um the the um this is a contractual agreement, we entered law council with the offer of uh different police law firm, um for the government lease. Um so if you may remember, Cameron did our uh to be aware, there's a police department, uh facility. Um the box, uh the box council on that. Um I've done box council for these um pieces of participation agreements. And um yeah, we're working with our internal finding the same uh right now, we have gotten offer letter, but my problem, I think it's been right since uh several right, um our database and uh over to the database for the air search and wayancing. And um we'll be working on uh the long helpful, so um the city attorney. Yeah, question.
Right, I have a question, I want to say this. We've actually prepared a call. Yeah, I think it's important to get. Questions, and yes, Cindy, say something.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, unfortunately, yeah. Move the doctor, I mean, we've opened the area that uh we either like, law firm, remind all the citizens for the mainstream steward.
One second.
Motion, Paul, please.
Mayor, come there.
Aye.
Please double the floor, aye, please double the little bit, aye. Mayor, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. So you see members.
I'm gonna do an unusual presentation, so I'll probably, uh now probably we're gonna have staff report. Are you team up, so I'm gonna advise the department, come down, if they have a staff report, just line up. And if I'm gonna have a staff report, it's my. Thank you.
Well, maybe, Mayor, or the council, um just wanna give you an update on some staffs that have been in eventually lately and may have seen herself on the news that obviously, we're approaching former weather, fire, weather, fire season on everyone's mind, everyone's are quite frankly, I am too, but no worse than any other year, we'll be prepared no matter what comes our way. But an interesting stat just came out that for Cal Fire, I live yesterday, that they've already responded to thirteen hundred wildfires. You know, and April was not available, but um so what I would say is, as before you presented today, the uh meeting had with Fire Safety Council, they're perfect, so that they were making progress on getting something accomplished in the future, it can take some time. But I would just say as a public meeting, it's important that everyone, all the listeners, the password that everyone just seems to be extremely cautious and careful with what they're doing, whether it's you know, towing vehicle, um you know, doing their, the rear burning and all, you know, that's what's going in, we center this here properly. Um and just to be safe, most of the fires are caused by by man, and those are criminal, so we deserve caution and be safe. Lastly, um I just wanna thank first, we just installed um a new um bay door, a single bay door in place of two other doors, and they had to do some carpentry. I can't say enough good things about Kevin Todd has to hire a new colleague, so they did enough end job. Um little disruption to the department, and even the the door installers were like, they're done already? They didn't expect they would get it done, so they had to solve a disease to invent a new hair beam, so yeah, worked that real well, I just wanna get through the public works group, you know, make sure you guys hear that, too, thank you, Gary. But I think in that day, I want you all to know that, you know, the the cooperation on state and city has been great, not just on that project, other ones you have to do too, so they really appreciate it. But any questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I did a couple of things that were up on my own, hey, um I just wanna mention you then. Uh one is, and I think somebody's already mentioned this before, but thanks for two weeks. I don't know. And then uh next week is the uh is the budget workshop on the. So with that, uh our staff report is complete.
I didn't say they have work, we will, yes, um today was uh Star Wars, National Star Wars Day.
It's like, oh, funny. Disney and Lucasfilm are in Congress, being around for the director of the C-Team Department. John, John, John.
All right, well, I want to councilman's report.
I'll keep mine quick, uh thank you, Gary, for the update on wildfire, because it's saving a lot of our citizens, and we we may ask about it constantly. I want to congratulate you, Doug, some heat that's out of the park, I see lots of like, that kind of logo, it's really nice. Um there were a hundred, I counted a hundred seventy five parks up for Greenham Park with the uh road re uh since the century, just to be seen in century, whatever you call it now. It was it was wonderful, it was well handled, and I had a chance to thank a couple of our parents, the tables that they put out there, and they said, we're gonna try and get them all done. We wanna get everyone, we wanna get tables finished, and I said, hey, thank you very much, and I think as a council, we need to make sure, we need to have our opinion to thank them, and their service members that are doing that. Um I had a I had a meeting with uh with uh Don, I can look for me to have hope tomorrow to talk about um what's going on with the airport and with the the homeless shelter at, you know, wherever you are, and coordinating with the city. Um I know uh chief, that fire safety and homeless is a big, is a is a big thing that's on our mind also, and I know one thing probably, Ray and I will and and Steve will probably, he will get somewhere in time, it looks like we're gonna have to do some, taking out some butt brush and things and and some of these camps and some of the stags out for not only fire, for safety, you're gonna fall right on somebody. Um so I mean, that's something that we're we're gonna need to get going on. Um I have spoken with Alex McBride, and I'm still reading that's actually, he probably is on uh further information, you know, what he did to require on our brownfield, you know, on on that uh cleaning up, I should have big study, maybe like maybe straight, so I'll, so as soon as soon as we get that, that'll be wonderful, and then um um I think that's it. And I promise that I won't be like President Biden and get around, be like, you didn't have President Carter and Rosalind during their late nineties, and sit with you without the mask on. Especially I could tell you that, you know, you need a mask. Uh thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, no.
Okay, uh Steve, measure C funding, is that, if I remember correctly, that was basically labeled public safety funds for uh police streets, that kind of thing? Is that clear?
So uh at the time when measure C was passed, the two major areas of the council were focused on the public safety and streets.
Okay.
So that I remember that at that point, we did have a operating deficit as well, which would make clear that uh the measure C can make.
Right, okay, so with that in mind, Paul, what I was thinking, measure C might have some funds available for this uh fire cleanup that I think we need to pursue.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I think. I think that's something we can, we need to talk about.
Yeah.
After that, I'm a doctor, I have nothing to say. Well, they're already right off.
Oh, you do?
Corey's.
I think I should, uh yeah, this is the Fire Safety Council, we have a summer, very, very, uh very, uh the very good thing, she's up there, yeah, very, very.
Very cool.
Very cool, yeah, that's it. And so, uh, I mean, it's a great, well, project, but something we don't want to do, and what Jerry brought up, so that was, that looked good. Um do you want me to say what they were?
Oh, sure.
Uh we talked about um the Oak Ridge, fire, getting that cleaned up and protection on there, and also um the Greenway that we talked about, my uncle down to Overland, getting that cleaned up, so totally the grass, right, or I didn't, this is a project, um we heard of this, this, we don't want to be, like, it's a big talent, who wants, giving a harder going for that roof area back three, so.
Let's bring up your points, as you mentioned, the creation of that place, the better past that orbit, to protect the Greenmore, and it went to affect main one in the room order with that now, or let's, you know, hope to protect the uh the building, the investments along there, too.
They were there, were there, are you taking them to hope, to the middle?
Exactly, they so they have, they have that facility, so that um helps them on on white building issues like that, so that's something that we as a city definitely need to uh address as soon as we get to that point. Um that I think now, since since they paved the way, um I think it definitely helps us and the city too in the future, they make that uh same ordinance available too, but except the key factor there is the availability of the shelter slash um urban campsite that we were discussing, so.
Well, and we wanna watch Sauce leader, because they, they just had a court ruling two weeks ago that they cannot move anybody on the park. The judge ruled you can't move any homeless person, you have it on the record, so I think that's probably, I think that's probably gonna go up, it's a report.
Yeah, I don't think that's gonna stand.
I I don't think so. Yeah, sorry. I I'm all good.
No, I got several followers about every messages from presidents around towns about the different houses that are looking bad and red holes and cars and cars that um like. Where are you working on? Every single one I bought it, so I was sitting on the yard, and I have her, she was a local racing here, I wanna get my bin there, and so it was nice to be able to go with Sax, the citizen, the fair, the force and officer, and working on that, perhaps, she said, fair, it felt out great, everyone I brought up, she was a lot. And so, she's awesome, yeah, very fortunate.
You know, if you can get a lot of work.
Yeah, you're talking about.
I don't wanna say you have a good start, but um I I think, I don't know why she rested that, but I'd like to hear a presentation from Laura and what some of the strategies they're doing. I think it would be very beneficial while it's for us, the citizens to know how active she really is on what she's got going on and stuff, so.
Yeah, she's done shit before, I think, her family.
Yeah.
I just wanna know what she's got going on with us, yeah. Nothing that just we don't wanna betray, uh any confidentiality.
No, no, no. She's she's got a lot on her plate, and she's known a lot, and a lot of this ties into the discussion of weed debate and fire control, that I know there's been some issues, so you know, we need to address on that, and I think she can address those issues too, you know, but then my questions are um what we presented, this is city to the citizens on how they need to manage their their property and keep it under a certain height and where we have it, so I think it's something that she can address properly too, and uh clarify some of those things.
Yeah, and then then I guess, um you know, when I talk about this frustration, this is, and then, you know, especially they think everything happened right now, and she's frustrated about, you process take on certain things with, you know, what she had for people, that um you know, frustrating that, you know, she was working on this, some of the half of that, what people think, but she was working on several things, and uh yeah, that's that's it, all right, thank you, or it's been waiting to that. Oh, my God.
Sorry.
Speaking of due process, seventy six thousand violent, nonviolent felons became eligible for parole in State Cal Park on Friday.
That's right. Seventy six thousand. Wow, majority will be perled.
Because I'm ready now, I could.
Hey, now.
You're on due process.
And I'm, I'm thinking from Corey's um report that he is beginning the same conversations and phone calls and email that we've been getting it, and that he had, I sent out there everybody regarding a whole letter sent, the city sent out, it will be true, but I actually read mine and paused it. So I need to get another one from the city so that I can.
Stay in that.
No, I talked about when they called again, and I gave him a couple of very irate people call, and I I let them voice their opinion, but I'd like to have a little more um research for my uh compensation next time I was given a call.
And I think that's, so if they're not, now go over, you know, presentations here with us, some more clarification to address this, that we we need to address soon now, with some of these, with these individuals, and make sure that they understand that that letter went out was a direct job of them, that letter went out was to make them aware of that we have a responsibility as citizens and homeowners and property owners to make sure weeds and whatnot are not getting out of control, so we don't burn down our city, so that's that's the purpose.
And the city has the responsibility to do it to our property, that the city owns as well, so.
And that's, and the problem that I can ask for immediately is the high school. And they talk, and I I had so soon, they said they called high school, the city is responsible for that pool, that big uh whatever it is up front of that gym.
Retention.
And I said, no, the city, the city is not responsible for that, we called back to high school. I have, I I've had four or five calls on that in the last thirty four days.
Really?
They just couldn't solve it, you know.
Yeah, yeah, it looks.
They they like to say we black and everything, but you know, I mean, schools, then we have to look at these schools and some of the public buildings also have top story. You know, not just school, but the local, the local government's responsibility, that's all, have a hard space that's not good for, and that's rational, just like that.
And it's uh, so I have to do this weekend, it's my property, up and down the creek, I cleaned it up, and then I went on to the property next to neighbors with my mom's, and then the next one over there, and I actually went on further, went up to the city, and we even let the city property too just to make sure it was nipped down and safe, so.
You're gonna do like a rover.
It's definitely a nice over there.
Yeah.
I was like. Um without, we're gonna keep simple, we gotta.
Reden it.
I'm done.
Yeah, sorry. I just need down to my knee. Anyways, um we gotta uh hold the system in tomorrow, and we're gonna send to the summertime portion of time count. We're gonna fine tune the ones, we've been fine tuned, so we can get an accurate count on that, and that, so it'll be, this will be a consistent thing from here on out, we gotta make that decision with the seven counties of North State, but it sounds like in all of the eight years, we'll be doing a point in time count of all seven counties of North State, so which will be interesting uh to try and head that one up, um I did go, but the last year, the last year wasn't as difficult for me to head up, even if we had filled with next year is gonna be a little more challenging, you know, two, it's gonna be two point nine counts next.
So the numbers on the off season one, I think will help us for law enforcement, so for crime, uh and and for what, for, you know, staffing, and also for buried seats, fire, for medicals uh stuff like that, which which I, yeah, I I totally agree, I mean, just look at our numbers, or locally, I know the facts, you know, right out the ballot. Our office this, in this last two weeks, that's probably almost done, the last two weeks have got in, it's gotten uh crazy, and I know well, you know, like once, it's, you know, um all over, especially in North State like that, the weather is more accepting, we'll be getting more party, raining, and all open, so hopefully this point time count will start going to some of the uh head officials, and we can start seeing some.
Hopefully, this point time count will start going to some of the uh, officials, and we can start seeing something that'll help us um, out of this, this problem, so. Um, on that, I think we're done, and we will go into closed session.